Thank you. All right, so thank you, Champ, for this nourishment. I appreciate that.
Yes, thank you.
All right, so maybe what we could look at is item eight. Is MSI municipal funding? I know that the government is still working towards a budget and we really don't have a sense of what's going to happen. But the reason we put this item there is because for municipalities extremely important to have a sense of what funding is going to be moving forward. The reason being that we are required by legislation to have a five-year budget for anything to do with infrastructure. It's very difficult to build a big budget when you have no sense of what kind of secure funding is going to be coming to the municipality. That's true of our town, but it's all true of all municipalities for that matter.
Yeah, I think you're 100% right. One of the concerns that we've had with the previous government was the lack of stability, lack of predictability. And so I think that that's something towns need to have as well. And that goes to say that whether MSI or not, they just need to know. So similar to what you said, if I can even add to your comments, you know, we are still in the budget process, we're still in a consultation process to where we are. But we fully recognize there needs to be some level of predictability among the province across the board and with the counties and the towns. So we don't have, we don't have an answer right now to the future of MSI as to exactly what it is or how it looks, but it is definitely on the radar. It's something that we are discussing extensively, but at the moment, there's nothing that I could really share besides we are well aware of it and hoping to make sure that all the towns can create that five-year projection so they're not in the dark after this ends. I think it's 2021, isn't it? Is when the MSI program is set to conclude. So, yes.
Yeah, so that one, all what we would like from you as RMLA is to make sure that the government understand especially that long-term predictable funding model for municipalities the same way as Edmonton and Calgary managed to negotiate theirs, which is giving them a sense of the future. We also want a sense of what the future will look like from a fiscal.
And you're well within, yeah, makes total sense. I wholeheartedly support that.
We don't ask for more, not for less.
You can ask for more, I just don't know if you're gonna get it, is all.
Well, we try to be reasonable, but we also need to know how to move forward.
I always learned in life, you have to ask.
There is item six that is an item that is really an important item on which councillor Salk has worked tirelessly for months, and it's a trade corridor. So with the idea of having the border open 24 hours a day. And it's item six.
Yep. This is one that I'm a little more well, that I'm more well-versed in. Even before the election, I remember sitting down with councillor Salk and in this chamber as well and in other settings. So with regards to the trade corridor, you don't have to convince me of the merits. I think it sounds like it's a great project, it's a great proposal. Where we're gonna run into problems simply is that it's not, it's not an isolated incident or, you know, an isolated proposal, you know, in the sense where this is an international issue. So from a provincial perspective, we can advocate for something like this if we choose to, but we have to also get buy-in not only from the federal government, but from the state of Montana and from the United States in general, something that everyone here is well aware of. So I'm really just going down the steps with this and I have put wheels in motion for a, for a motion, I drew motion 506 in the legislature. And with that, I have proposed that, you know, be it resolved that it's in the best interest of the government to extend the hours of the, of the, of the border in car wait 24 hours around the clock. So I have received a bit of feedback from the ministry on that. And the initial feedback from the minister was, you know, it sounds like it's in, it's a proposal that could benefit or enhance economic prosperity in the province. That's what our government was elected to do. But in terms of any deeper research, we haven't gone much further than that. So as that motion comes up, I'll be working with councillor Salk and anyone else on this council that wants to collaborate with me on that. But I think I do need to manage expectations a little bit because this is an issue that doesn't just concern Cardston or even Alberta. So we can, we can push against this as much as we like, but there, there will be opposition from the federal government, be it conservative, liberal, NDP or otherwise, and from across the border. So I just, in terms of immediate movement or even, you know, short-term movement, I do wanna caution council that, that this is, will take time because it's not something that's gonna move very quickly. Unfortunately, I have, of that I am certain.
Okay. Now councillor Salk, anything else you would like to ask of MLSC?
No, I think MLSC has framed it very nicely that we know it's a long-term thing, but.
Okay.
And it's one that I'm happy to advocate for on your behalf. And like, to put things into perspective, draws for private members' bills and motions come across once every year. And if you get anything under 510, because everyone's name is put into it, you're probably out of luck. They just won't get to you. So drawing a motion in general is actually very difficult. I may never see one again in my entire political career. And I'm using it for this reason because I want the constituency to know that this is a local issue that's important to Cardston. But it is a trial balloon in the sense where as I put this motion forward and if, and if 87 members or fewer decide to vote in favor of this, it doesn't force anyone's hand. It's basically just a notion of support. So I'm hoping to do the research more with, with anyone here that would like to be involved with that. But I do wanna also caution, people know that as I move this motion forward and work to get it passed, it doesn't force the government's hand provincially, federally, state, United States.
Okay, fair enough, and we appreciate your support in that regard. All right.
Just a follow-up.
Go ahead.
The one request, and I think you read that already, Mr. Gao, is that we're in the process of working through the request for proposal and we're looking for funding to fund the study. Care is obviously went away and we're just wondering if you have any suggestions for a funding source for.
I will have to say that I don't have any suggestions primarily because we are in a fiscal pinch. And when it comes to initiatives, something like this that I have worked on my political career, when you're effectively lobbying in government, I do believe it comes down to relevance. I believe that if there's companies that really wanna see this done, if there's towns, municipalities that really need it done, the money will come up because it's relevant and it has a long-term economic benefit. That's just more of a personal statement, but in terms of funding from the government, we are in a very, very difficult funding situation, one where we will know the extent of it in the future. But with regards to where money will come from, I would have to be very blunt and say I don't see a lot of resources going to, going to municipalities for any initiatives like this. But again, happy to ask. I'm certainly happy to ask the government for it, but I would caution on an answer.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Well, at least we know where we stand. Let's go to item five, renewable power centers. What we are requesting there is for you to come to understand a little bit what the position of the town of Cardston is. We own our own electrical system, but there are a certain amount of legislation that is really putting us in a position where we cannot move forward with economic opportunities, I would say. So essentially, what it says here is that the town is looking to be afforded the same regulatory consideration as the city of Medicine Hat so that we may work toward increased electricity generation within the town limits and reduce our reliance on and subsequent cost of the provincial grid system. So what we have is a request, if you could make time to sit with our CEO so that you could really understand the complex nature of the issues that we are dealing with on a regulatory level so that maybe in time, years to come, we can finally break through that barrier as a town. It's a complex issue, so we can't really discuss it piecemeal, it has to be as a whole. So would you be willing to sit down with Jeff and come to understand that aspect of our business?
Okay, let's do it.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, I'd probably say closer into September, though. That would be my recommendation. But yeah, just talk to Patty and she'll, she'll find a time and just tell her I told you to block, block that if we can.
That's all what we're requesting there, it's too complex.
Oh, no, I get it. I, I understand that there's certainly more to it than just a couple of notes. So yeah, let's, let's sit down and discuss it.
With Jeff, we went to Edmonton, we talked to minister, we talked to the associated. But it's so complex that I don't really know that we really could really help them understand in a little better time they afforded us.
Yeah, you're gonna be hard-pressed meeting with the minister to get more than, you know, half hour, 45 minutes. But if there's any briefing notes that you wanna send my way, send them my way and then I can read those before the meeting and then we can have a robust discussion.
So thank you very much. So that's one that is important to us to, let's talk the hospital, it's nine. The hospital, as you know, you're living in town, you know something about a hospital. One wing of the hospital is now almost 65 years old, the other almost 45 years old. There is a time where certification for that hospital may not be given any longer. So before that happens, we like to know that the government is aware of a position and that Alberta Health be at one point directed to do a business case.
Yeah, absolutely.
So that's where we are desiring to be. Before the NDP came in last time, we were so close to having a business case done. And Alava-san, there was immigration issue, et cetera, there was great impact on the bigger centers. And our little hospital did not, no longer appear on the radar.
Yeah.
So somehow, we need to have the hope that it will reappear on the radar and that sooner or later, in time to come, but if we don't start to plan today, I don't know how we get to tomorrow, that there will be something to move forward towards replacing that hospital.
Yeah, so I believe I saw proposal about replacing and renovating. So I think the numbers, I saw the numbers. And I gave those numbers generally to Minister Shandro about the hospital. And given that we're in the middle of our interim supply and then we'll have our budget in October, there'll be some better understanding of where, where resources are. The short answer is it's on the radar because I've made it on the radar. I've spoken with Minister Shandro a couple of times about this and was more than happy to have that conversation. No commitments were made whatsoever on that. However, I made some promises during the campaign that I would work connections that I had and relationships that I had to make sure that the South wasn't forgotten. I've been in this for a very long time, made a lot of really good friends, and Minister Shandro is one of them. So I have Minister Devon Dreschen coming down to picture Butte on the weekend. I have Minister LaGrange, education minister, coming down in September at some point, and I'm hoping to have Minister Shandro come down at some point as well. So with regards to concrete answers, there are none. With regards to being on the radar and me working on your behalf, without question. So as, as I get more information from that minister and hoping to get him down here to tour the hospital and really help him understand the rural dynamic that he is aware of, but the catchment area that we now serve, given that McGrath has, has closed and, and there's seen, there was a trend with the previous government that we like to, long and sweet, short and sweet here is I'm trying to get Minister Shandro down here sooner than later to, to see Cardston and see the hospital.
Will be very glad and happy to host him. We also want to let you know that at this point, Alberta Health Services is working with the town and in conjunction with that, we have the Blood Tribe that's starting to be more willing to work with us toward that project and a county.
Would there be any numbers and anybody would know off the top of your head as to what the usage percentage is from town versus county versus reserve?
I don't have the number right there, but I would say it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be wrong to say that a good 80% is being used by the reserve for sure.
Okay.
Good, that's probably a little bit, you're probably around there.
I mean, I would think no less than.
Just anecdotally, yeah, just anecdotal numbers serve me well here in this, in this instance. So.
But it, it needs to be a hospital that fits the need of this community and the joint communities because we have unique needs.
Yep.
And that cannot be just any kind of hospital. It has to be suitable for the needs we have. And the needs have changed greatly. We had a need assessment done about, Jeff, if I'm not mistaken, about seven years ago? Need assessment? I've been on council nine, so about seven, probably. And from that time, we saw big changes.
Yeah.
And we had not even foreseen those then, when the doctors were there and the hospital staff, et cetera, was there. It was not even foreseen, Alberta Health Services were there.
Well, I think.
So things have changed quite a bit in this community.
I can imagine. And I, and I think from a general perspective, you know, if you take it at 30,000 feet, we as a government do believe that people think better for themselves and have the government think for them. And so we are taking that approach to most things. So when it comes to the needs of a rural hospital, a one-size-fits-all model, in my opinion, is never going to be sufficient. It will never meet the needs. What, what works at South Campus in Calgary doesn't work for Raymond or for Cardston. I'm aware of those concerns and as your representative, you, you know, unquestionably, I will advocate on behalf of that.
Thank you.
So, so for me, the process is, is, you know, between now and when the session resumes, or rather commences, I would like to continue to engage the Minister of Health and see what his schedule is like and, and see if I can't get him down here for a visit and just get on the radar. Because I do know that once the, once the budget is released, we'll have a better idea as to where we can allocate resources. And if there's resources in this budget or the next one for, for Cardston, you can bet your bottom dollar, I'll be, I'll be advocating to get those dollars here.
Yeah, and I mean, when it comes, we would love to have the, the Blood Reserve invited to, I mean, we have former chief Charles Whistlehead that is working with us and Mr. Covent who is working with him on that project together with us. And Rotary, actually, is the one who brought us together, interestingly enough.
Sure, yeah.
So those are participant, councillor call?
If we move past the mortar and the asbestos in that hospital, another story, staffing levels are a concern. And not just staffing levels, because we, like you see, one size does not fit all. We, we're a very busy little hospital here. We're many times when we are redlined, we don't have any ambulance service here. The closest would be Fort McCloud or Pincher Creek or McGrath.
Yeah.
If they're in the middle of transfers or they're, they can't go any more hours, that's gonna be, that's a major concern and I'm afraid it's gonna start costing lives because we just don't have that coverage like we need to have.
Yeah, that was, that was an issue that came up before the election with regards to ambulance shifts. And they were, they're on the flex, the flex system. It's not something that's standardized across Alberta. I know that, like, I think Vulcan County doesn't do a flex system, or maybe it's Tabor. But in any event, yeah, I've heard of those concerns and it's actually seems to be creating some burnout.
Some of us have been on council for quite some time. The original, we were firing an emergency service and now we're just fired because the province took it away. We had three ambulances, we never had much trouble for coverage. Since AHS has changed the rules, now we have trouble with coverage and we're having trouble with burnout. And even the staffing levels in this hospital are not sufficient.
That is a serious concern for me with regards to the burnout. You know, regardless of what job you get into, you can always experience burnout, but it's rare that your burnout can cost lives. So it's a, that's certainly something that I, I wanna look into. I, I haven't heard anything specifically on the radar with regards to changing the shifts here because that is, it's something localized to this area. So I'll be sure to bring that up with the Minister of Health as well.
Sometimes it's difficult to get people to come in because we're so far away.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Working double shifts and that. But again, I don't have any statistics to back it up, I just have a, like, that works there, so I hear things, so.
Well, I'll tell you, you know, if you're not gonna have doors, you'll, you'll come across them. And this town, there's a lot of tremendous first responders and frontline workers.
Yeah.
And it's my job to defend them, it's my job to speak on their behalf, the legislature. But the one concern I did have was, was the issue of burnout. I mean, if you've got someone who's, you know, who's on that, who's on the cusp of having a real problem, we need to ensure that this isn't becoming perpetual for other people. So I will conclude by saying I will definitely be sure to address this and I, and I have briefly, but it just, it wasn't something that I got to during this session with the minister, but I'm, I will definitely speak with him about that.
Okay, now we're going to take a softer approach there. It's a community pasture, it's number 10, and then we will go to.
No less controversial.
Yeah, policing matter, they are very important to us. Okay, so item 10 has to do with the community pasture. If you were there when we were discussing the land use by law, councillor Bond was bringing that up, but we realize that the usage of public land is sometimes controversial because you want to have the pasture, so you have the farmers, but you also want to have the recreation on that land. So essentially, regarding our community pasture, we have one request. And that you may be able to take an engaged approach to the matter to help facilitate finding the right governance model so the two parties can live together. And regulation framework to allow for the publicly owned land to be used responsibly without excessive oversight or regulation. It's a small item, but it's an item that creates friction.
I can tell you that of all the items on this list that you have given me today, this would be the one that I have heard the most about.
I am sure you have.
It doesn't make any less more, any less or more important than other items, but it seems to be a, it's kind of front and center on people's radar here in town. And my concern here is, is actually unity. Because I know you've got actually families that are divided on this issue as to, you know, who has rights to do what. And I have to do a little more research into the, into what rights people have, but I've heard concerns from both sides. I certainly do believe that if land is paid for by the taxpayers and owned by the taxpayers, there should be access to it. But a lot of what I hear is anecdotal. And so I am working with, with the county on some issues on this specifically, and I, I couldn't really go into detail on those at the moment. But yeah, this, this is definitely on the radar. We actually had the Minister of Environment and Parks down in this area last week for some, two weeks ago, for some consultations on, on public land access regarding Big Horn and Castle Mountain. So again, on the radar, we're in discussions with it. It looks to me like there's a couple pieces to this, one with regards to a road allowance, another with regards to just public land access in general, and then one with regards to liability. So again, I am working with, with all parties involved on this, and I know it is a contentious issue, but at, at the moment, I don't have anything to give you in terms of hard decisions being made.
Yeah, we, we don't look for a decision. We look for you to become an advocate for a need for proper governance of those lands so that there is.
Equal opportunity.
An ability to share those public lands that are publicly funded.
I, and I think that's, I guess just the definition of what is, what is fair is subjective depending upon who you talk to, whether it's, you know, a grazing leaseholder or someone here in town. So I would like to find a resolution, like you're saying, and I'm working towards that.
Yeah.
It's just, it is, it is a very heated, controversial issue, more than I expected.
Alberta, really.
Yeah, so I'm trying to make sure that we have that.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not playing both sides, I'm just trying to make sure we don't go to war with each other is what I'm trying to say. Because it, this is an issue definitely within provincial jurisdiction and I, I wanna make sure that the rights of the landowners are respected, but also the rights of the public who technically, sorry, the leaseholders, not the landowners, leaseholders, I will clarify that, the leaseholders and, and the public are respected.
In my opinion, when you have a good governance model, you settle the issue in a hurry. It's to figure out what that good governance model will be. Because that is something that is very obvious for us even at the table. When we don't come to that unity that you're talking about, it's because we don't have the right tool at the base to work with. And if you have the same tool that you're working with, which is a governance model, if it's well-defined, there should be, that should be a tool that brings unity.
Well, I think that's what we're looking for. And with the work I've done before the, during the campaign and before the election, I was having a difficult time understanding where the buck stopped, if that makes any sense. And so that's, that's really what I'm hoping to get some clarification on through this process. Because it sounded to me like he said this and she said that, and there was no real understanding as to who was, who was making the final decision. I think the only thing most people agreed upon was they weren't happy with the former environment, environment parks minister. That was, that was the only sense of common, of common ground there was. But.
Or the county, currently.
But in any event, that, I'll, I'll have to leave that, you know, kind of my, my input at that because I don't have a lot more to share with you besides it, we are, we are discussing it.
Well, it's to help you understand a little bit of one item that has concerned us over the years and we have not found that people come together to find a solution themselves. So maybe the government on the whole needs to look at that notion of public land a little bit more closely.
We are definitely looking at it.
All right, let's go to the cannabis access tax. I know you have nothing to do with it, not your doing, not your government doing, but unfortunately, municipalities are taking the brunt for it. Without the resources that are properly allocated to small towns anyways, big town will tell you the same story. So essentially, what we have for request is that the matter of funding via the excise tax be addressed with some movement toward funding local peace officers and RCMP officers, including proper equipment needed to determine impairment through cannabis. Because in our town, that's not full of self, does exist, and.
Nobody, nobody consumes marijuana in Cardston.
Of course not. Of course not. And that is an issue, but we don't have the tools to do that properly either.
Yeah. Yeah, I understand that. This is something that I'm a little. Yeah. Yeah, I I understand that. This is something that I'm a little bit upset about because they the because the federal bill was passed but pushed on to the provinces to 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 develop the legislation, something that came under that that the NDP took uh took control of. And I do think that uh I think most provinces are probably personally, I think they're still working through some of this. Um but it I can understand the request. Certainly, I can understand the request to ensure that officers have the resources to determine levels of impairment. That's a
I mean, that should be a basic, right? And should not always be footed by the municipality when they are not the one who created the legislation. I know you didn't, but at least there are some revenues that come from the federal to the provincial. But somehow, a little bit of it needs to trickle down back to the municipalities.
Yeah, I I don't even know what tools are being used to determine impairment levels at the at the moment. Um so
Uh they have kits that are not exactly a hundred percent proof yet.
Yeah, it's a
Walk the line, yeah. Anyways.
Yeah, the plan for the liver gun was a bit half baked.
If you can keep yourself abreast about that one and try to see a little bit when the excise
Yeah, yeah, I can definitely
Is there to try to make sure that little town are not forgotten.
Well, I can assure you one thing, the promise is that the little town will never be forgotten.
Good, because we importance. And the last one, but not the least, is a policing uh issue. We have a great detachment in our in our midst. We are happy with what we have. We always could have more personnel attached to that. Our town has an RCMP detachment that varies in number, normally about seven, I think. And essentially, where the issue is, is the manpower required to look after these areas that extremely large. Not only do they do the town, they do the county, they do the border, they deal with disposing of all the narcotics that are found at the border, takes them away from their duty here in town in the county, they assist on a blood reserve when needed. So they're really spreading themselves then. And we we have certain level of needs also in our town. So in order to help the matter, we used to have just a peace officer that was half animal control and half by law control years ago, until about three years ago. At that point, with the changes that I was mentioning in our town, it became obvious that we needed more safety uh and security personnel. And so we have a level one community peace officer to address areas of law enforcement.
If I could ask, what are the levels? I did I I didn't know there were levels. I knew there were specific
Jeff, go ahead.
Yeah.
So there's actually almost not levels anymore. It's come back around. There used to be levels one and two.
Two.
But now there isn't a CPO two designation anymore. It's been removed. So you either have a vital officer or you have a level one peace officer. And really, you're just adding some um provincial statutes with the peace officer.
So they have more, you'd say they have more authority. So Brad, and that's Brad, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So he has, I think, six acts that he can enforce under. I'd have to look at his his authorizations, but yeah, it simply adds some provincial acts that he can enforce.
And Brad worked for the town, correct?
Correct.
And he stays within town?
Yeah, we do have an agreement with the county on a we have a contracted basis and approval that he can do work for them should they request it to be accommodated.
Sure, okay. Yeah, cause I I I do know that, again, what what makes us unique is what makes us beautiful in the fact that, you know, we we have a very large area that the RCMP services, like incredibly large. And that's a concern for me because I do know that criminals are getting really smart. Uh and rural crime is a real problem. I mean, criminals are always getting smarter, but uh rural crime is a problem with uh across the province. And I don't think it's necessarily a policing problem so much as just um there's there's some things the the government can do to step in there and help out as well. So uh I'm interested to explore this as to expanding some of the uh the abilities of peace officers. I think, you know, I how that looks, I I wouldn't venture to say it at the moment, but looking at this proposal, I I can understand where you're coming from because, you know, if you've got RCMP getting called out near Waterton, um it 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 doesn't leave a lot left here, especially if it's a certain type of call that requires all the police officers in town who are on duty. So I did a ride along uh during the camp uh shortly after the election, I actually think it was. And yeah, I I definitely understand the the needs of local RCMP and and that they share some responsibility between the Blood Tribe Police. And yeah, I'd 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 love to look into this and see what kind of options we can explore from a government's perspective.
Jeff?
Uh just so you know, you may be getting so ACPO, the Alberta Police Officer anyway. Community, yeah, or Community Peace Officers Association. They are looking to bring uh something to the province on adding some authorities and allowing peace officers to have some additional authorities. And there's there's a give and take between K Division and Soulgen and ACPO because you have to decide when are you gonna start arming peace officers? When are you gonna start? You know, there is a level and there's greater protection. And most peace officers don't want to be armed. They don't want to fire on these people. So there is something coming to to the table and I know around the peace officer piece.
Yeah, I'll I'll have a a conversation with the Minister of Justice and Solicitor General about that, but yeah, I I I'd love to explore it.
Okay, well, that is pretty well the conclusion of our presentation to you unless council has some other items I would like to add to the conversation. But that's what you had the briefing on.
I just have a I don't know four AUMA meetings and ministry access.
Oh, yes, the AUMA meeting. That is something that the former government really gave us a lot of trouble with. We uh we felt It was a lack of communication, lack of presence, lack of open door policy. And open door policy in the past, uh conservative government, so before the NDP, was a very um good things, we felt. Because of course, not everybody could see the minister, but you had a chance to at least see one. If you had an issue that was an important issue, transportation or whatever it was.
Yeah.
And I would give you sure 10 minutes, but 10 minutes was an important 10 minutes. At least we could feel, we have been heard. The minister was debrief ahead of time, and we could have a dialogue that allowed us to understand what was going to happen. We had that with the Minister of Environment when we had the bad flooding situation 2014. And that really, really helped us a lot to be able to speak face to face and help them understand our situation. And in return, it helped us to resolve quite a few things.
Well, I think it's a pretty basic principle. I I work for you. The minister works for you. That's how it should be. Um there's been a number of occasions where I've been sitting in the legislature and got a text from somebody asking a question, and the Minister of Education or Health or Environment is sitting close to me, I'll go by and ask them a question quickly. I mean, access isn't a problem. Access to the minister, access to chiefs of staff, access to press secretaries, et cetera, et cetera. Now, I can't speak to how the previous government operated. I wasn't part of it. I'm
No, I'm just telling you about Buck this.
No, no, happy, no, this is this is I I've heard this lots. But what I can tell you is, uh if you are unable to get access, I can't guarantee access, but I can certainly guarantee you that I will respond and work on your behalf to get access. I I'm I'm actually working a couple files right now with people and, you know, they're up in up in Edmonton for a day and they asked, well, can you get me a meeting with this minister just kind of on the on the fly? And I can I can do my best to make it happen, right? Like, it's not like we have a closed door policy. Ministers are busy, but their job is to service the people. So what I'm trying to say is, if you have problems with access, which you should not, please text me, call me, let me know, and I and and I will do everything I can to either get you access, uh an audience with the minister or chief of staff, or get you an answer. Cause sometimes you just need an answer, and I can get that for you.
And sometimes it's exactly right. It's just an answer. It's not to have to wait six months, I'm not kidding, after pestering the staff of a minister to get an answer to a letter, an official letter from municipality. That was appalling.
Yeah, that's unacceptable. So I'm I'm happy for you to bypass me in some of these instances where you're just going directly to the minister. That's 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 the plan. But if you're not getting the answer, you're looking for something stalling, please let me know.
And we will make sure that whenever we write a minister, that you are CC'd and that you are kept in the loop. For us, it's very important that you be an informed member of parliament that understands what's going on in your writing.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I never like surprises. So if there is, you know, concerns, I mean, you've 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 clearly laid them out here. And and no one you council isn't rookies here. So you know that when you're meet dealing with a minister, you just obviously need to be clear what you're looking for, and I'm happy to help you with that.
So thank you very much for taking the time. I'm sure you're a little tired. You had a long day. And thank you so much for taking the time to hear our concerns. It is refreshing to have somebody here to whom we can talk.
I'm 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 honored to be here. And as I said, I did apologize for not getting here sooner, but just circumstances didn't permit. But I do intend on being here as often as occasion will permit. I work for you. Um with regards to being tired, the real work begins when I go home and take care of my two week old. So so I I don't intend to get any sleep tonight. So I mean, this is this is a a welcome opportunity to to visit with you and hear your concerns. So please continue to extend invitations to me. I will always accept them as I can. And even if I can't be here for council meetings, I believe every single one of you has my personal cell phone number. Um I know you would never abuse that. Uh so please just text me and call me anytime you need like some some help with something. I'm happy to be there.
Thank you so much. And as councillor Bangry said, congrats on your new son.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All the best to your son, your mom, the mom also, not your mom.
I say she she did all the work. I I'm just
Yeah, right.
She's there in a supporting in a supporting role.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, councillor Bangry, you want to extend the meeting?
Yes, I'll
Put a motion to
Motion to extend for 15 minutes.
Do you know what? Put it to nine o'clock and then we
Motion to extend for nine o'clock.
All in favor? Thank you. Nine o'clock, which always says. Okay, so let's go see. Did we?
Fire truck.
No, give me give me a chance to see a little bit where we at. Yeah. So Okay, all right. Maybe I can do that one quickly for you. Seven A, uh talking with Jeff, uh the two properties that were in the books and were on a block, the taxes area were paid off. So there is no need for tax sales. Okay? So that's the answer to this one. Seven B, uh the fire truck funding resolution. I'm sure you all saw the wonderful truck at the parade or if you came to the uh the invite that was there from the those who put it together. No, it was a fire department, but it was hosted by those who sold us a truck. So it and it came from Madison Hut?
Manitoba.
Manitoba, Manitoba, that's right. Anyway, it's it's really a state of the art, but state of the art does have a price, of course. And so as you can see, we need a resolution to transfer some money from the reserve. Jeff, do you want to talk to that a little bit, please?
Um I just I wanted to explain, we knew this expense was coming, but at budget time, we didn't know the exact amount. So we thought we had it in reserves and we would simply do this by resolution. So I we we did perceive it. We just wanted to make sure we had the exact dollars at the time. So that's why we're doing it this way. And you'll see two more of those same kind of ideas coming up.
Okay, uh so you need a motion to transfer the funding.
At the bottom, yeah.
Councillor Silk?
Make a motion to approve the transfer of a hundred and ten thousand five hundred and seventy one dollars from account four dash ten dash two six ones, two six one reserves, protection and emergency services to fund additional expenditures from account two dash twenty three dash two hundred. Fire requisition for the purchase of a new fire truck.
Perfect.
Ad nauseam.
All in favor? Thank you very much. Uh the next item I need also to have Jeff there. Seven D, electrical capital reserves resolution. Uh you may want to talk about the asking.
Did you miss one there, Mayor?
Oh, seven C, sorry. DRP funding funding resolution. Now, this one involve a lot of money. So this one uh needed a little bit of uh time in order to know what the government was going to do in regard to that item.
Yeah.
Phase two and three of our remedial. Go ahead.
So it looks like we're on track to do um the second phase, which will be the final one. The program closes next March.
Okay.
So any money has to be spent by then. Um they've agreed to give us 50% of the total as a down payment so we can pay expenses along the way. We still have a line of credit for 1.7 million to finance the project, which was required when we did phase one. We do not have DFO and Alberta environmental approvals yet to work in the creek, but we've asked for those not in the normal window in August, but instead at the end of September to minimize impact on the golf course and the campground. Uh and that looks like we should get them for that. We have already put out to tender for contractors and awarded the contract pending we get the cash and we get the environmental approvals. So everything, all of our ducks are in a row. Um but except we did not budget 1.6 million dollar expense in the budget. So I am not currently authorized to expend any money. Uh now, this is a ideally no impact on budget because we'll have an equal amount of income.
All right, so you need a resolution.
A motion.
Uh yeah, motion or resolution. Go ahead.
Make a motion to approve expenditures totaling 1,636,277 dollars and 50 cents from account two dash two four dash two three zero, Alberta Disaster General, to be funded 100% from the disaster recovery program grant, account one dash 24 dash 800 disaster grant.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seven E, uh council
Do you want to vote?
All in favor? Yes, sorry, I'm trying to go
There's a question, Mayor.
Go ahead.
A question on that, Jeff. That's money that's been promised but not received?
Correct. We do not have any of it yet. And that's okay because we don't have approvals to start yet.
Okay.
Um but I did ask if they'd give us an advance, which they agreed, because we're starting to incur engineering costs. So we've got about $50,000 in costs for the engineering and all that. So um they they will send us some of that soon.
Okay, the next item is an interesting one. It has to do with the electrical car chargers. So Jeff, do you want to talk a little bit about the asking from the electrical department?
Yeah, just the quick summary is, um we need to be at 25,000 volts for the charging station that will that is planned to be in front of Family Foods. That is not a converted area yet. That was planned to be converted next year. So when I talked to Leonard, he said that um they could accomplish the conversion, but he just needed $15,000 to purchase a new transformer. Now, we have a considerable electrical capital reserve, so we're not having to find this money. It's again a reserve transfer to accommodate it. And even in the worst case, now we have every confidence that the charging station is happening. We've signed off everything on our end, but it would still be a necessary conversion for the 25,000 volt conversion.
So it's just being done one year ahead of schedule.
Correct.
Councillor Brown?
I was gonna make a motion, so maybe
Please go ahead. Oh, do you have a question?
I assume that we are charging people to charge.
So they will be they are managed by ATCO is actually who manages them. And yes, they're you pay like a gas, you prepay with your credit card, it authorization authorizes a charge to plug your vehicle in.
And the town of Carson gets some of that.
No, we don't. So we um we will get, no, I should take that back. We get the electrical, like the distribution charges off of that. Yeah, we get our piece of that because we are the distributor.
And what you what you get is for 40 minute, the people who are charging or I don't know, it's a super fast charger, so about 40 minutes, 40 forty minutes. know, it's a super-fast charger, so about forty minutes, forty minutes. For forty minutes, you have people who are going to go and go have some to eat, some to drink, or whatever. So, it's a little bit of an addition to the service industry. Hospitality industry. Councillor Brown, go ahead.
Make a motion to approve the additional expenditure of $15,000 from account two dash nine two dash seven six two light capital to be funded by a transfer of $15,000 from account four dash ten dash two six nine reserves dash electrical.
Perfect. All in favor? Thank you very much.
I could have a question. Sorry.
Go ahead. I should have...
Is that what they've been doing with the ditch witching down there, is getting that all set up? The wiring and everything, the cable laid in there?
They've been laying the conduit, is what they've been doing, yeah.
Okay. I was wondering about that.
Good question.
Thank you.
Seven E, this one, Jeff, you might give us the synopsis, but you might also try to give us a little bit of comparative with the other case that we had to deal with, and how different they are or how similar they are.
Yeah. This is, this is one of those tricky ones, because people find out you did something once and now they want theirs. So, this is relative to the building just across the street, next to the laneway. And in that building is a couple of apartments above the commercial space. So, with those commercial properties, anywhere in our downtown core, the central commercial, they go right to the sidewalk. There isn't any space, so their curb stop is literally right alongside the building normally. This line did freeze, and we hooked it up with overland. And in fact, it was never able to be thawed until Mother Nature allowed for it to flow again. So, the land, the building owner incurred costs for that. Now, the majority of the costs, well, I shouldn't say the majority because I haven't been able to get, and nobody really knows the exact number, but much of the cost was due to trying to retrofit the building to accommodate an overland connection. So, it's not a building like a traditional residential build that had an outdoor spigot. Didn't have one because it was a commercial facility, and then it was retrofitted for apartments later. So, you can imagine that trying to supply the water from a different location to a greatly partitioned building is difficult. And so, according to the bill, a lot of the charges were for that. There was an attempt to try and thaw that was unsuccessful, and there was an attempt again later that was unsuccessful, after we'd hooked them up with overland. And they just had to wait because there was a fitting, or there was some reason that they couldn't get through to thaw. So, I don't really know why. My position to the building owner was, the bylaw of the day does not allow me to reimburse any costs. It simply doesn't. Now, there is an element here, similar to the other one we saw, where there was work done prior to us hooking them up with overland water. But the process of hooking up with overland water took days because the building wasn't set up to have overland water, to take water from another source. So, it's a very tricky one. My position was, the bylaw doesn't allow me to reimburse you. That was my position. They asked that I appeal, well, I'm not appealing to you, I've given my position, but they would like this to come to council for review. We do know that we did accommodate a portion. Now, that ended up only being a few hundred dollars, by the way, when all the bills came in on that. Yeah, it was a third less, a quarter less than what they said they were charged. But this one was $1,800 total, was the plumbing bill. And again, if we look at what the new policy says, it would say that we would be responsible from the curb stop to the main, is what the new policy would said. Again, this policy didn't exist at the time of the event. Where we looked at the other one, or you looked at the other one, as you said, what did she incur before we hooked them up with overland? That was kind of what we looked at on this one. So, in this case, I would suggest, from, I've talked to the plumber, I've tried to talk a little bit more to the land, the building owner, it's a reasonably small portion of the costs of the bill that were incurred prior to trying to hook them up with overland. But we couldn't just go hook them up, they didn't have a way for us to do it.
What, are we talking about two, $300?
Potentially. I mean, the building owner wouldn't agree with that amount, but that might be a realistic amount, because really, all we're looking at is the attempt to thaw the line the first time prior to hooking them up with overland. That's the cost incurred prior. And we couldn't hook them up as soon as we wanted, because we didn't have anything to hook up to. So, they had to hire a plumber to put piping to the outside, to pipe between the buildings, to, but that, you could argue that that isn't our issue.
Well, the retrofitting is not our issue. Our issue is that where the cost incurred before the overline, the overland line.
And why I said in the background is, us hooking them up overland and them incurring costs were happening simultaneously, because the process to hook them up with overland took a while, because it took a retrofit. So, it's a really tricky one to say. But I bring it to you at the request of the building owner.
All right. Councillor, what's your position? I would say, really, what we're responsible for, if we are responsible for anything, might be the two or $300 prior to having the overland line, if at all.
We had more than one person apply for funding that came to council, and one, I guess, was paid two, $300 or whatever.
It was $400, I think, yeah.
And the other one was paid not at all.
That didn't want the payment?
I'm trying to think. So, we only had the, as I recall, and I would stand to be corrected, we only had the one who incurred costs prior to us hooking them up overland. I believe. Time has passed, but I believe that's what it was, yeah.
And two brought, but only one was paid because of...
They incurred them prior to the overland.
So, the precedent has been set, essentially. And so, in my perspective of this, like the mayor said, the cost that's incurred previous to this, I would say I would be fine to pay forward, but after, no. And I do not feel it is our problem that the building was not outfitted, you know, with the proper fittings. I don't feel like that's something we should have to pay for.
Councillor Silk, how do you feel?
I agree.
Okay, well, right there. Okay, so, please go ahead.
We could do a motion up to a certain amount.
Or just negotiate the costs in prior to the overland connection.
So, I make a motion to pay for the cost that was incurred prior to us hooking them up to...
Or attempting to hook them up with overland.
Attempting to hook them up to the main water line.
Up to how much?
I don't think we need to say that, because we don't have that.
To be negotiated with administration.
Yeah, I'll negotiate it if you're comfortable with that.
Questions? All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, the next one is also a very interesting one. Seven F, that one, to me, has an element of, how would we call it? Moral issue, maybe? So, here it is. Can we pay, would you be in favor of seeing taxes paid by credit card? Or would you look at it as a person that's already in debt is only going to have more debt, or is that our business or not? Councillor Silk?
On our business, and however they pay for it, that's up to them.
I think a lot of people, so in my circumstance with our shop, we pay everything on our credit card, because we get certain points that we can go away and do whatever. And so, again, it's a personal choice, I think. We just need to make that available to people if that's what they want.
I think, I think every business out there, you can pay with your credit card. That's the world we're living in, whether it's online, whether it's, I'm all about the points. Exactly right. If I could, if I could use my credit card to pay my taxes, I would, because I want the points.
There's a subtle difference here, though.
No kidding.
Under the option pay proposal, you pay the credit card fee, we don't. So, it will say, Paula Brown owes $2,000 for taxes, plus another 60 in credit card fee. Because what you see in Calgary actually went through this, they stopped taking credit cards a few years ago for this, because they were paying $3 million a year in credit card processing fees. So, we take in 2.6 million dollars in taxes. Let's say 50% of that was by credit card. Well, now, all of a sudden, third year, you're paying $48,000 a year in credit card processing fees. So, what option pay is saying is, you can choose that, and then it tells you, in order to do this, you're going to pay the credit card fee, the town isn't. Now, we're also willing to look, so that's where we, communities all around are struggling with this notion, right? Because it's adding so much more, but that's at the discretion of the purchaser. That's up to you. So, for me, for example, and I told the mayor, I wouldn't do it, because I only get 1% rewards on my credit card, so there's no point paying 3% fee. Right? I'm much better not to get the 1% rewards for the 3% fee. And so, for me, that doesn't make sense. But if it does for someone else, that, this is the discussion we've had. We've already been talking about implementing it administratively for pool passes, dog licenses, you know, those little things anyway, where if, you know, councillor Drew comes in and pays for his dog license, it's gonna add just cents
Fifty cents.
For the fee, right? It's minor, but it was a convenience you wanted. Or you can then take payment online and do some things like that. So, we are looking at expanding our ways of payment. We set up email transfer, because those are no cost. So, people can do that now for many things with the town. And this came up through that process of, can we accommodate more? But then there's this funny conundrum about paying taxes with credit card. So, we just, I just wanted to bounce it off of council and get a feeling.
I look at it, I agree with councillor Brown. We have no business to regulate people whether or not they can use a credit card. But here's my take on this. So, if it means somebody's paying their taxes and avoiding having their home subject to tax sale, they pay it with a credit card, so they avoid that, they deal with a credit card company later. The credit card company's not going to come and take it. They're going to have a credit collection agency or whatever, if they're that far gone. That's where it's going to happen. And then they all deal with them at that point in time. I don't think we should have to legislate whether or not they can use a credit card. Personally, I'm like, Jeff, I'm not going to pay my taxes with credit card. I got 3% on my credit card bonuses, but if it costs me the four or five percent, I'm losing money, right? So, I wouldn't do that. I like the tip program, it's a great way to do it, right? Comes into my bank account. So, I don't have a problem with people paying with credit card. That's up to them.
All right. So, if I heard you right, there is a majority of consensus to ask for administration to move forward and looking into that program.
They need to pay the costs.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, if the town has to pay the cost, forget it. It won't happen.
Well, you go to Costco and put your credit card in there to take cash, you're going to pay through the nose. It's going to cost you five to six bucks. So, it's the same thing. You make, you're made aware, before you can take that money out, there's a note there that tells you, this is an administration fee that you will pay.
Okay. So, are you okay around the table to deal with that?
Yep.
So, I don't need a resolution. It's, we can go with it administratively. I just kind of wanted to bounce the idea off, so no councillors were caught unaware.
Yeah.
But I can also say that that actually came up in our golf advisory, one of our meetings was, people wanting to pay with their credit card for a season's pass or whatever, and just being able to do that is a nice, it's just nice.
Yeah. We have been looking to expand the ways people can pay, especially you need a credit card option if you're going to start taking online payments. Then we're going to need something.
Exactly.
Well, as long as it doesn't cost the town to administer that program.
And that's what these programs do, right? And you're seeing more of that. Go book a provincial campground. Go book in Waterton. You pay the fee on the bottom. They don't pay any of those credit card fees. So, it's becoming common.
So, that is, that is fine. All right.
We're not establishing the precedent. It's there.
The next one, councillor Court, you need to talk about that item.
Yes.
It's about private Cyril A. Gooding, who was a World War I cross medal, memorial cross medal recipient. And his medal was found on eBay. And we were made aware of that. There was no council meeting ahead of that. And I think councillor Court, you had...
Yes, I'd love to talk to this.
Looked at it, and you really wanted to talk about this item.
Yes. Just to clarify a few things, I didn't dash out there and buy it expecting council to pay for it. I would like council to contribute to it, since he is one of our fallen soldiers. The amount came to about what I thought it might be, maybe a little higher, because of the circumstances. He was killed at Bimby on April the ninth. He was also part of a documentary put out by a guy named Warren Christie, as they were trying to find his body the last couple of years. So, I guess, and I just emailed the guy and just got back, and I asked him if, you know, what was going on with all this stuff. And if I could just report real quick, he said, I just got your message. Your cross is on its way as of this afternoon. Should be here next week. I have talked to the Legion about donations. They seem to be in favor of that. I've talked to the History Society, haven't heard too much back from that one. I've also had several people approach me with the idea that they may, would donate towards this. They didn't say how much. I guess my bottom line is, is how much would council be willing to donate to it, and if so, how much. And if it's not all of it, or if it's part of it, I will find other ways to get the funding for it. That medal will go right there below his name.
Councillor Court?
Memorial cross, just to clarify one more thing, is it's sent to every mother whose son is killed in war. So, somehow this one wound up online. The family obviously was not interested in it, so.
Which is a shame. But beside that, councillor Court, here is an issue that I see. It was the same issue that I had with the address that was returned to us, safety. When you have a cross that is returned, and you would to put it here, we have no way to secure this item. It's an item that is valuable and is able to be traded again. So, we need to secure that item some way, and I wouldn't want to have to be the one who has to worry about the loss of something that we try to retrieve.
The only way you could get around that is that the name is on the cross. And if they're going to sell that, they're going to sell it on eBay. And if you find out who's selling it, and they've stole it, it'd be easy enough to track it down. That's the only thing. And I, maybe I don't have as big a concern about people walking in here stealing a memorial cross. I have one in my house. It's my uncle's. But the reason this one had some value is because of its historical value. Most of them would go for much, much less than that.
All right. So...
So, I almost feel like I need to recuse myself while you vote on this, because I do have the money involved in it.
Maybe it would be a wise move.
I'll just step out for a minute.
Maybe it would be a very wise move. Thank you. This one's a little bit of a difficult item. Councillor Court is extremely passionate about anything to do with veterans. And bless his heart, all what we have here is because of his passion. Having said that, there is still an element there that we need to consider. Imagine that we have 50 of those medals that appear on eBay for one way or one reason or another, because a family didn't find it sufficiently special to honor the memory of their lost one, and decided to trade a very valuable sign of honor on eBay. It is disturbing to me, but whatever. It might, by being something, we need to decide as a policy, what do we do?
I had two thoughts on this one, Mayor. One on that is that I think what we should do is possibly reimburse councillor Court for the full amount, and then seek donations to reimburse the town. And the other part of this is that any further medals that come to our attention, that needs to be a decision of council and not done unilaterally.
Well, okay. Let me address a little bit of those concerns you have. Councillor Court did it... Councillor Court did it not with the idea that it might be reimbursed, because he did it unilaterally. And, uh, there was no way to have a council meeting and neither did you receive any email to that, to that effect. I did not direct Council, uh, Councillor Court to buy it. I told him that that should really be up to the family to buy that medal, because it's a family heirloom and should have been kept in the family. That's when I discovered that in fact the family had discarded that item. And he felt because it was part of Carston history that it should be retrieved to Carston. So that is that. So Councillor Court does not expect us to reimburse him.
No.
That's not the point. He's wondering if the town would be willing to participate in a, in a fundraising campaign where really we individually can, can contribute to, toward that. But I really feel, because the Legion is interested, I really honestly feel that if the Legion had a copy, a similar frame and a medal that would be exposed properly, properly, that they should be the guardian of such an item that's so precious. So I don't know, Councillor Barnes?
Oh, I think that we should participate definitely. And I don't think that Councillor Court should have to carry the brunt of it.
But he chose to, okay.
I know he chose to, I understand that. But I want you to know, I'm just as passionate as he is. I had a father that almost died in the war and he's lucky he came home. And, uh, I mean, if, I, I would, I would be definitely in support of the resolution to pay for it. If council doesn't want to do it, I will, I'm, I'm prepared to pay some money, a hundred bucks myself, out of my own pocket.
Personally, I think, personally, my preference would be that we have a fundraiser and that we'd get the Legion to, uh, come, come up with some money, that's as I would, probably up to, they were talking possibly half of the cost. So.
So I talked to Councillor Court about it, um, and just asking, I couldn't believe he'd spent that much money on something like this. Of course I know his passion. And his words were, even if nobody else pays for it, I wanted it. And so that was his choice, you're right. You didn't direct him. Secondly, of course it is not our job to judge the family that had to sell this. I can't imagine being in the state where you would have to sell this. So my heart breaks to them and, and that is not our job.
It's quite possible that there was no more heirs that were interested and could be a part of an estate.
Agreed. Thirdly, I would say, I would be much more in favor of, rather than spending taxpayers' dollars on this, I would be more in favor of us working with the Legion, whether they had a, a dine and dance and council helped or something, I would be more than happy to help donate that way, because I feel like that way it gives the opportunity for the taxpayers out of their own pocket to put forward, rather than us putting it forward on their behalf. I don't, I'm uncomfortable doing that. And I feel like you're setting a precedent.
Mm-hmm. Councillor Bangry.
As far as I'm concerned, Councillor Court's name should not even be involved in this. We started a wall of honor program. I don't know what it costs us to frame each one of these pictures. It's, it's going to continue on. This is part of that memorabilia. And I think the town should contribute to it.
I don't view it quite the same way, but appreciate your opinion. Councillor Drew.
I kind of have some mixed emotions. I, I'd like to see the, the ability to fundraise for this, so that everybody can kind of partake of that. But I also feel like, you know, the town could help support that as part of what we have here, so.
Personally, uh, I'm going to add my own opinion. I really feel that as a, an individual, I would contribute to that personally. But I really would like to contribute through a fundraiser to involve more of the community and to work in conjunction with the Legion, because we don't have that many opportunities to work with the Legion. That would be a wonderful way to do it.
And you're honoring the man, rather than just putting it, you know, it, it just reminds me, my mom has this, this Pioneer quilt that's hidden away in this box, in this trunk, and it's never brought out and never looked at. And I'm constantly wanting to touch it and hold it and, and look at it. I feel the same way about this cross. By having a, um, a fundraiser for it, we're getting this incredible hero's story out and we're, we're paying tribute to him all over again. What a beautiful thing that is, rather than us just deciding on the spot, yes, it's going to go on the wall, great, it goes on the wall. Why, Councillor Court, it's not about the $800. He's fine to spend it. He had the money.
He wanted to spend it.
He wanted to. It's more about the celebration of this hero and in doing something like a fundraiser of sorts. When we did one for Peyton Olson, we honored her in this beautiful way. We did it for Linda Burwell. This is, this, this person has passed, but why not give the community the opportunity to honor one of our fallen heroes? I don't know.
Okay. Do you want to put, uh, uh?
Here?
Just give me a second. Do you want to put a motion forward and then we will still take questions?
So I make a motion. Hmm, I make a motion that we, that we work with the Legion to do a fundraiser to honor this fallen hero from within our community, to pay for a portion of the cost of, of, the cost that was incurred to get this medal, the $830.25.
Okay. Question?
Uh, I, I like that motion. I'd like to say that if the community does contribute to this, there's a possibility we get a lot more than the $835 bucks. Maybe this could be something as an ongoing project that if for further, any further crosses or anything is found out there, that we have this fund that could purchase those items.
Or it's given back to the Legion, to help within the Legion.
Yeah.
Rather than us have to, you know what I mean? Like, I love that idea.
If the Legion put it forward.
I agree. I just feel like it's, it's a partnership with them, but we give it to them so that they can use it.
They can decide what, how, best done.
Exactly. Who better to make that decision?
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
All right, so we have a motion on table, Councillor Salk.
So would we then take donations at the town office?
We could take donations at the town office.
Oh, for sure. I'm just trying to think if we can give charitable donations.
Yeah, you can give a charitable donation receipt.
Yes, if we purchase it.
Hmm.
Because we're not, we don't hold the asset. We're taking it on behalf of a private individual. I can't issue a charitable donation receipt.
Can the Legion?
Uh, maybe.
Yeah.
But they don't own it either.
Right.
So CRA looks and says, who's getting, who owns this thing when the money's raised?
Right.
That's what they're looking at, right?
Right.
Now, Councillor Court may be of the opinion that once the money's raised, yes, the town or the Legion owns it. Perhaps he doesn't feel he relinquishes ownership of it at that point.
Right.
We can look at that, we can look at that down there. A lot of people, because of the motivations of a thing like this, aren't going to be as concerned about that.
No, no.
All right, so do you want to leave the motion the way it is?
I do.
Okay, all right. Any other questions?
Could, Mayor, could we possibly table this until we, you're back from the Legion?
You know what? You could possibly put in your motion a friendly amendment that say, uh...
Pending discussions with the Legion.
Or the town, um, um, meets with the Legion to discuss putting on.
Pending discussion between the Legion and the town.
Yeah. That's what I said.
Would that be?
Of course, that's exactly what you said.
Would that be fine as a friendly amendment? Thank you, Councillor Bangry.
Friendly amendment to our own motion.
All right.
Done, I just said it.
Or you said it, perfect.
I said it.
So all in favor?
To what I said.
Thank you. All right. Perfect. Could you please bring, be Councillor Court back in? All right, guys, we have 20 minutes to finish.
It feels fun, doesn't it?
Now we need to push a little.
I don't think we need a discussion, this was from Dick and.
Yeah, we're going to go through it a little bit.
That's funny.
All right. Councillor Court, we want to thank you for your passion. And when Mr. Thompson called, called me, I said, you need to talk to Councillor Court. That is a person you need to talk to. And obviously, he obviously had that on the radar, and I say, I would like you to talk to the Legion also. So I think it talked to the Legion and to yourself. And I told him the Historical Society also, that he should contact them.
And I have talked to all of those groups already.
Okay, so, so that's good.
Let's just wait.
So essentially, what will happen, there is a motion that has been decided. Do you want to read that motion, possibly?
Uh, Councillor Brown, tell me if you concur, by the way. Moved by Councillor Brown, the council proposes a partnership with the Legion to organize a fundraiser, raise the funds to compensate the cost of acquiring the Cyril A. Gooding Memorial Cross.
That's exactly what I said.
Okay, good.
Okay. All right.
May I speak to that? May I speak to that motion?
Sure, if you want to.
That's very generous of council. I would be happy to, um, be the go-to person between the council and the Legion.
Oh, absolutely.
It was never my expectation that the council would pay for all of it. And, um, I would be happy to spearhead some kind of private donations and if they, if we get enough private donations, then we won't have the council contribute anything to it.
So.
But we would love, we would love to honor the hero.
We love to have the, the Legion involved.
Yeah, I talked to Lisa already. I told her, wait till after I talk to council and we go from there.
So if you can carry on that item and bring us back some information at, in September, that'll be fine.
I'm away for the next two weeks.
You need time anyways.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you so much. And your passion is much appreciated.
To have council with it in order to honor him, is what we're thinking.
Can we, uh, carry on?
Yep.
We good?
Yep.
All right. So on the item H, business arising from the delegation, I think we have spoken fairly at length. Jeff, did you get enough information about those sticky items that we had regarding, uh, regarding, we talked about tightening up possibly the way we have the land use by law, but at the end, we, I think collectively, we decided to leave it the way it is?
That's what I have, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. And for Mr. Skow, I think we have given him quite a better food for thought. I think we will carry on making sure that he's, uh, made aware of situation in our town. And if you have something that needs to be communicated, bring it forward. We will make sure we discuss it. Okay? Let's go on to item eight, committee, committee and other reports. Peace officer, you can see the peace officer was busy.
Very.
At this point, he does not have his other half, so is doing it all.
Good, Mayor.
Yes.
Question to ask.
Councillor Barnes?
I had a concerned citizen come to my office just as I was leaving to go out on business and just irate, upset about the peace officer. What gives him the right to go out of the town of carts? And then I thought, well, we, there are issues in the county he has to be involved in. And I don't know whether that person came here to talk to you or not, because I suggested they come talk to you about that. But I, I, I would like to see maybe a bit of an education piece go out there that, um, that our peace officer does carry over into the county on some, in some regards. And, um, and so that they're aware of that. And I know this person was very upset that, you know, thinks that, that people are being targeted for tickets and all this kind of stuff.
Well, we are targeted, aren't we?
All the time. But anyways, I just, just, it was just a concern and, and I think our peace officer is more than fair. I've watched him and seen how he deals with people, but there are some people that just don't like that at all.
And, okay, I just want to say something regarding, as a follow-up to what you said. You will have some people in town that would have witnessed something or they think they witnessed something. And sometimes they don't have the right background regarding the action of our peace officer. So they label him as no good and vile, as evil, and you carry on. There is no end to the label. But honestly, we have tasked a peace officer to create a more safe environment in certain specific area of our town. And so we need to be behind a peace officer in his action.
Absolutely.
And remind those people who are foul-mouthed that if they were behind the law, they wouldn't have to deal with a peace officer.
That's right.
And that's all what I say. I rest my piece.
Thank you.
All right. A to B, C O reports, you could see there is an awful lot that Jeff did besides taking holidays. And so we do have question, and there was something else, Jeff, you wanted to talk about?
I forgot one thing.
Yes, go ahead.
Jeff, looks like we're getting nowhere with the NRCB and basically it's going ahead.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the short story there was, we don't have jurisdiction to change it. They hurt our concern. They'll do what they can to mitigate it by regulation, but, um, that's, that's what's happening. And thank you for our letter. Uh, what I failed to mention in my C O report is I met with Volker Stevan and Alberta Transportation. On August 19th, they're going to be tearing up Ninth Avenue from the bridge to Seventh to replace all that.
Ooh.
So, uh, and then they're going to be working in Twelfth and coming back a couple hundred meters as well. So they've agreed to fix the intersection and then come back past Dallin Levitt a couple hundred meters.
Cold packing it again.
Yeah, I believe they're going to do some cold pack. Now, they're, they're, they're in a difficult situation because they don't have a budget either.
Oh, why not?
They have no budget this, so far this year. Uh, so they're doing what they can. You might have noticed, we agreed to do some work on the ditch drainage there, so we've been doing some digging and hauling and riprap to help with that, because it's a moisture issue in that ditch. So we're doing some cooperative work there to try and get that done. We had some other discussions about who should own Ninth Street ultimately, who should own Twelfth, what about the bridge? So those negotiations will be a little bit ongoing as well. But we did meet and Aug- August 19th is when they start work.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And maybe we should add part of what you had in your report, Jeff, that on August 15th, we have a meeting with AHS.
Thursday?
Yes.
Yes, Thursday. We have a meeting with AHS in town and I had the chance to see Marcel Whistlehead, and he told me he will be there at that meeting. So that would be good. All right, so Capital Projects Report, you could see, from the most part, we are following the timeline. It's, uh, pretty good. There is, right now, they are working on Third, uh, Street East. And they are doing the sidewalks in the same time, so that's quite good. So thank you for that. Financial reports, you can see, uh, we're doing very well. You have May and June here. Do you have any questions regarding those? The investment report is there for your information. We're making a little bit of money, not tons, but some. So Alberta Culture, Multiculturalism and Status of Women, Solititing Award nominees. If you by any chance have a sense of someone who in this community deserves an award, would you please let Jeff know? Okay, send the nomination to Jeff, that would be good. Okay, send the nomination to Jeff, that would be good. Alberta Municipal Affairs, you could see we have two projects approval and invite, one project approval and one invitation to meet at AUMA. As Jeff say, unless we have something very pertinent that would make sense to meet with the minister, let's not waste his time. So, if we have something, we should really do that. Jeff?
I just want to mention, I don't understand the project approval. We did that last fall.
I was gonna say, that was Fifth Avenue, so it was already done.
I know, we get these so arbitrarily.
But they always come after the fact, after the money has been spent, et cetera, and paid for.
It was a year ago.
Thanks for the work you've already done.
Yeah, so, I mean, we get those letter as a matter of fact.
You just saw the project report, you didn't see Fifth Avenue on it, then you saw approval for a project that was there.
Yeah, right.
The previous government already did and sent us the same letter.
Well, I don't know why they always send those letter after the project is completed. I really couldn't, I never have figured that one out yet. Ten C, Carston Agricultural Society, you want to talk about that?
Already happened.
It's already passed.
But I can speak to that, thank you.
Please, go ahead.
Just real quick, the Agro Dome would love to thank the mayor and council and everyone for all of the help and money that has been put towards them over the last year. The Agro Dome activity for Heritage Days was fantastic. They had a good turnout considering the weather and they just wanted to say thank you very much for our continued support.
Well, thank you for having a beautiful carriage to write on.
Would it be appropriate for our town to write a thank you letter to those that organized the parade and those that organized the ball games and stuff like that? A lot of, a lot of time and effort went into that.
You know, there was a mud bog, there was a mud bog that we can before and all that stuff. There is nothing wrong in sending thank you notes, but...
The weather, we, it went great, everything went great.
Yeah.
A lot of prayers were said.
That was great.
Okay, so, is that a desire of council to send a thank you note?
Sure. Maybe we'll get it again next year if you think this should...
Why don't we just put a big thank you on the, on my billboard outside?
Okay, so, here's a suggestion, put a thank you on a billboard.
Just a big splash, thank you.
Put the front, the electronic billboard.
I mean, it doesn't disturb me to write a few letters, really. But I'm sure that Jim would write us a couple thank you letter.
I don't think that, I don't think the Agro Dome needs a thank you note. I don't think if they have a councillor sitting on their board because we, right, on behalf, that's who, that's what we do, that's what we represent. But as far as maybe some of these other ones...
Maybe I'm being a little bit too selfish, but my son organized the ball diamond one and he spent forty, fifty or sixty hours on it. And I'm sure the parade one was three times that much.
I'm sure. As was the pancake breakfast.
And the pancake breakfast and the mud bog and the...
So, I wouldn't say the mud bog because that's Agro Dome, but the other ones he's talking about, I definitely would think it would be nice to have a...
Okay, so, who do you want the letter to? Let's make a quick list, we don't have much time. So, the rotary for one.
And rotary.
Organizer of the softball tournament.
Yeah.
The, do you want to have something about the, what was the thing your daughter organized?
Mud bog.
The mud bog?
No. No, no, that was separate.
Because that's separate. Alright, so what else?
They didn't write in the paper.
That's it.
That's it.
Because the rest of it is Agro Dome.
Something they call it.
And the Lions Club, but then you thanked the Lions Club, what about the IG, what about, I mean, what about all those who do that, Legacy, what about extra food?
Five minutes.
Okay?
So, yes, do it.
So, we can do that for all those.
I have no problem with the Agro Dome getting a letter, they do a lot of things. I know that they appreciate what you say, Paula, but I think a letter coming from us would be appropriate.
To do it.
Yeah, we also give them sixty-six hundred dollars.
They get paid, the Rotary Club, don't they get paid for the parade too?
Saying, I thank them, but whatever. I'm more than, I mean, it's a thank you.
I don't wanna leave anybody out. If they all get thanked except for the AHS society, then they say, hey, what are we...
Let's not argue about who is going to get the letter. Let administration decide who should get the letter.
I'll make that resolution.
Okay, somebody pass it.
I'll make that resolution.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. It would be easier than to argue. Alright. I know. Ten D, St. Roman Watershed Council, thank you, Councillor Bangle, you represented me that day, I appreciate that. So, ten E, Alberta Environment and Parks, so we...
Just a little interim update, nothing.
Of that, nothing.
Yep.
Ten F, Town of Peace River, now this one is an important one and you spoke about it. And it's, here is the need, do you want us to write a letter of support or do we let AUMA do that on our behalf?
More letters you get, the better.
I think that, exactly, the more letters they get, the better.
That's what I believe.
I would make a motion to direct administration to send a letter of support to the Town of Peace River.
And suggesting also that we forwarded their letter to our MLA.
And with a CC to our MLA?
Yes.
It's a great idea.
And to maybe our MP for that matter?
Yep. Maybe to the Prime Minister or the Queen do while we're...
No, well, the MP can talk, it's his writing, right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much.
Motion to go closed session.
Closed session.
I'll be quick.
All in favor? Thank you. Thank you very much to the media story to have kept you so long.